Call the meeting of the regular city council to order at time 6:30. We're getting ready for closed session. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers for closed session?
No, sir.
Then we are recessed into closed session. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are reconvened from closed session. Mr. Melching, do we have anything to report out tonight?
No, Mayor. There's no reportable action this evening.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember August.
Here.
Councilmember Lees Meyer.
Here.
Councilmember Edgerton.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Denver.
Here.
Mayor Mann.
Here.
Thank you.
We have words of inspiration tonight by Reverend Rex Wingall, Sun City United Methodist Church. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. There we go. Since Wally Edgerton is listening in, we're going to be offering prayer on his behalf as well as for the city. Let's be in prayer. Heavenly Father, our thoughts and prayers this evening are with Wallace Edgerton, who tonight is in the hospital in the San Diego area continuing his treatment for recent organ transplant. We ask for his return to full strength and health and pray your wisdom and guidance to our mayor and council members for the many responsibilities that they carry on behalf of the people of Menifee. As we continue into a new year, we ask your blessing on the entire community. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Council-- Mayor Pro Tem Denver, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Please join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. We have a couple of brief presentations to make. We're going to do it from up here in the dais. We just want to publicly thank and-- oh, Ms. Gina is filling in for Ms. Woodruff tonight. Good evening. We would like to, as a council, express our deep heartfelt gratitude for the work and effort of both Planning Commissioner Lees Meyer, now Councilmember Lees Meyer, as well as Planning Commissioner Mark Metelko, for your five years plus of dedicated service in developing the general plan for the city. You two guys and your colleagues on the commission were very, very instrumental in breathing life into the general plan and contributing to all of the present economic development and growth that we do see, both on a positive fashion and all the amenities that have been brought to the city. You guys should be commended, and we're very, very grateful for your service, and we hope that you serve in some capacity and continue to provide us input. And so with that being said, I'd like to just present this appreciation certificate, this plaque, signed by all of us. Notice, your signature's not on here. And of course, a little memento for your planning and your meeting. So congratulations, Mr. Lees Meyer, for all of your efforts.
Thank you, sir.
And we also have one for Planning Commissioner Metelko. Mark, I don't know if you want to come up and get it. We'll put it right up here for you. If you'd like to come and get it, or maybe come get it from Mr. Leclerc, we thank you, sir, very much for your effort. Well done on everything that you did and participated in. Thank you.
Thank you.[238.12][238.12](APPLAUSE).
Do we have any speakers on this item?
Yes. Mr. Tom Furman would like to speak.
Please, Mr. Furman.
Thank you, counsel and staff, very much. Mr. Metelko has dedicated his principles and beliefs in private property and protecting the Constitution. When I appointed Mr. Metelko, I felt it was very important to have a voice in the Planning Commission that lived in the rural community and understand the rural lifestyle. His decisions were for what's best for Menifee, and they were never overturned by his councilman. I never knew a man with such conviction in what is right until I saw the movie, The American Sniper, and I am proud to call him my friend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Furman.[301.12][301.12](APPLAUSE). I believe that concludes our presentations for tonight. Oh, yeah, please, come on up. Absolutely. I'm sorry, I should have invited you up. I apologize.
Short sentence. I would just like to say it's been both an honor and a pleasure serving the citizens of Menifee with you, Tom Furman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Metelko.[323.44][323.44](APPLAUSE). On to approval of the meeting minutes of January 21, 2015. Are there any modifications or changes to the minutes? Hearing none, those minutes are approved. Agenda approval or modification? Madam Clerk, do we have any modifications to the agenda this evening?
We do, Your Honor. Item 11.1 has been re-noticed, as noted on your agenda, and that re-noticing will have it heard and decisions made next meeting and is scheduled for that. That said, if you could take that item next time, and to anyone who is here that wanted to speak on that, you may do so under public comments instead of under the item, and that's how you'll be heard this time, but you are also welcome to come back.
Excuse me. Excuse me. It's not your time. Excuse me. Madam, excuse me, madam, you're out of order. You're out of order. Sir, if I have to get-- if I have to warn her again, I'm only going to give her one more chance, and then we'll escort her out of this building. Madam Clerk, please continue.
So those could be heard tonight on public comments, or you are welcome and encouraged to come back and speak when it is on the agenda for a decision by this council. That will not be tonight.
Is there anybody in the audience who was planning on speaking on 11.1 that wishes to speak during public comment? If so, please put a form in with the city clerk, and we'll hear you during public comment.
I have her form, and I'll go ahead and make note that it is now under item eight.
Very well.
Thank you.
With that being said, the agenda is modified, and we please call the first public commenter.
Thank you. Katie Manier.
What a surprise I'd be back. I'm here tonight because we have a new Planning Commissioner that lives in a neighborhood where there are three houses that have been uninhabited for years now. They are not red-tagged, Mr. Johnson, as you keep referring to when I talk about these homes. They're not red-tagged, they're just uninhabited. They're uninhabited because--
Excuse me.
Ms. Manier.
Yes?
I wanted to draw your attention to an item of city council policy, the decorum policy for public comments. This is section 3.1.5 of the city council's decorum policy, and it really does require that members of the public that come up to speak during public comment address the city council as a whole, and then it further forbids addressing specific people. So each time that you come up and you turn your attention to a specific person sitting on the dais and focus your comments on them, you're outside the scope of the city council's adopted decorum policy. And so in order to keep the level of dialogue in the room high, we'd appreciate it if you'd address the council as a whole. Thank you.
Those comments came from him, so I'm not-- I'm understanding, I am not-- I don't want this to be part of my three minutes here, because I have a question. Since he's the one that keeps saying they're red-tagged, I don't have any right to use his name and say that it came from him, and he's wrong?
Ms. Manier, this isn't really a forum for a back-and-forth dialogue. I'm happy to have a conversation with you offline about that. The answer to your question, however, is that you really need to focus your comments to the council as a whole. That doesn't forbid you from using a specific person's name, but it does forbid you from speaking directly to that person instead of to the policymaking body that's before you. That's the point. Thank you.
Well, I actually don't believe I was speaking to him. I did mention his name, and I looked his way, but whatever you think is right.
Please proceed, Ms. Manier, and if you could make sure that we've got her times appropriately set. Okay, thank you.
Okay. weeds in one yard, eight feet tall. I wonder why he never-- Mr. Carwin never questioned this when he moved into the neighborhood. If I moved to a neighborhood, I'd want to know why are there three houses that nobody has lived in for many years? The sidewalks and driveway are being eaten away as if by acid. The family that lived there before, the lady who lived there a couple of months, had her spleen removed. I have documentation of this. I'm not making up stories here. Right after they moved out because they couldn't live in the house any longer, her husband died. The whole time she lived here, she had a son that was gravely ill, couldn't find out what was wrong with him. They had toxicology reports done, toxic reports done on that property. Anyway, I want to know how he's going to represent the people of this city when he doesn't know what goes on in his own neighborhood, and yet he's appointed to the Planning Commission. We have 15,000 acres that have been dumped with sludge in this city, 15,000 acres on the 215 corridor. That includes Santa Rosa Academy, that includes Country Marketplace, that will now include the new Menifee Lakes Plaza, or whatever you're calling that place across there. I want to know if the Department of Toxic Substances has been notified that now there's going to be another school built, a high school built, that is also on soil that has been dumped on. They need to be notified, and that is your job to notify them.
Thank you, Ms. Manier. Next speaker, please.
Tom Thurman.
Good evening. My name is Tom Thurman. I live in the community of Sun City. I just wanted to thank the Senior Advisory Committee, the city staff, and Councilman August for the event they put on today about the caregiver's workshop. I think it was very successful, very informative. We had quite a few people show up. I just appreciate what you guys have done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thurman. Mr. August.
Can I make a couple of comments about that today, Mayor? Or would you like me to wait until--
Can you wait till the next agenda item?
Absolutely, sir.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Vivian Moreno.
My name is Vivian Moreno, and I am from Riverside, California. I own 30milesOfCorruption.com, and I would suggest that every single one in here read the Pasadena Independent Newspaper. Today, you will see that I was in Pasadena, again informing them about the law, the case law in Baca versus Moreno Valley. There is nothing that incenses me more than a mayor that is a bully. And Mr. Scott Mann, you better learn decorum in your building right here.
Melcher?
No, no, no. If you stop me, if any one of you stop me, there will be a lawsuit, a per--
Mr. Melching, you are--
File against--
Ma'am, ma'am, this is a point of order, ma'am. No, you need to-- you will have your opportunity to speak, ma'am.
You have no idea. I am speaking--
No, ma'am. Ma'am, you need to stop, or you will be escorted out. This is boisterous behavior.
If you escort me, this city will have the biggest lawsuit that you have ever seen, and, Mr. Mann, I will sue you personally.
You know what? Okay. Okay, one more chance. Excuse me. Excuse me. I'm actually familiar with-- I'm familiar with the case. I work. Excuse me. Excuse me. Sir, please escort Ms. Moreno out of the chamber.
She's trying to make a scene. She's trying to make a scene, Mayor.
You have to arrest me. Have you heard of all the people--
What I would like you to do, madam, is please finish your statement. Finish your statement without threat, warning, or personal attack.
Excuse me, I'm doing my--
Can you do that?
And could you please--
I will allow you to continue. I will allow you to finish your statement.
Three minutes again. You don't allow me anything, Mr. Mann. You are nothing but a bully.
Okay, I'm sorry, sir. Please escort her out of the chamber.
I got to grab my stuff. You, sir, are going to have the biggest lawsuit you have ever seen.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comment. I appreciate it.
I need a new house. And I know that you can--
Next speaker, Madam Clerk. Yes. This is a-- please, that's it?
No, I didn't know if you were ready for me to--
I am ready to call the next speaker.
Thank you. Ms. Miller.
Which--
Ms. Miller, if you wanted to speak on item 11.1, the item was re-noticed, and we asked the audience to do so during public comment. That announcement was made right at the beginning of the meeting. Would you like to speak on that now?
Is this my only chance?
No, you'll have another opportunity next on February 18.
On the 18th, it will come back.
Oh, no, I might die before then.
Well, then, that would be now.
I might die.
Could you call the next speaker while Ms. Miller is deciding whether she's speaking tonight?
Well, that would be the last speaker, so we'll-- Ms. Miller, did you want to speak tonight?
Something I have to do. What we have here. I'll come up with something on the 18th if I can. Here we go. "The traffic such a venue will bring will be thousands of car trips per day with conventions, meetings, dinners." This is the hotel that's going right across the street north of Antelope and west of-- of, no, west. Let's see, that-- you know where it is. Then, "If you need a hotel, go to the closed Albertson's at the west end of town in remodel an empty building that repurposes an existing structure. This already has a beginning structure, and no available open space will be used. That property is already agriculture," the piece of property we're talking about, "and could be used to generate income from planting sunflowers, alfalfa, non-GMO wheat, or industrial hemp, which could renitrate the soil, and hemp will help decrease the heat and sequester the carbon and heat coming from the traffic. It makes about $3,000 an acre for the city. That's not nearly as much as a commercial venue, however, it's better than letting the land sit there and threaten us with another hotel, which may be similar to the ones in Long Beach, which have a variety of non-family activities. I thought Mr. Lysimera was slow-growth and would not support this aesthetically pleasing open space. However, after his chat with the queen of earth destruction, Melissa Melendez, in Sacramento, he probably can't think about the importance of the earth as our life bearer. The council needs to talk about money with visions of alternatives for turning the rural character and quality of life into polluted inner city. We have to get a grip on the use of land and its impact on the air and water. A hotel will take tremendous amounts of water, so don't be out there soliciting hotel corporations to build in Menifee. Then there is the LA Fitness. If you think so much of being fit with the LA image, then move there and see if your lungs and liver like the environment. Leave our air alone. There are already fitness outfits in Menifee, Menifee Fitness, Fitness 19, Pilates, Menifee Athletic Club, Curves, Quantum Fitness. Some apartment complexes have gyms, and they need to stay small businesses the way they are. You will put them out of business. Shame on LA Fitness in Menifee for shutting down what is already here. The property at Antelope and Newport is a floodplain, keeping waters out of areas where they don't belong. You don't have the drainage to withhold the 100-year floods that will probably come here. Do you think the earth is a footstool for your pleasure? You need to fit into what has already been built, and that might be somewhere else. Stop supporting these deniers of the needs of the environment."
Ms. Miller, that is your time. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
I have another two minutes.
Okay, see you on the 18th. On to count the-- does that complete the comments? Public comment?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. On to Councilmember Reports and Committee Activities. Mr. August.
Couple of points, Mr. Mayor. One point I have to report out, that on the 22nd of January, I attended RTA meeting, a board meeting, and basically, I was taking over from Mr. Edgerton, who wasn't able to attend, and so I'm trying to come up to speed as fast as I can. But anyway, at that meeting, we voted unanimously, I think it was 20 municipalities, that we approved the new tenure transit plan for the service area of RTA, which is 2,500 square miles. And I can only tell you, I was planning on making-- bringing some notes tonight, plus some handouts for the council, and I don't know where they are right now. My manager, Kay, probably-- I asked her, and we can't find them, so. But anyway, I will certainly bring those to the next meeting, and we can discuss that at the next meeting. But I will tell you one thing. Depending on what the build-out and the population and jobs are in the city of Menifee, RTA a class organization, what we're planning, and what we can probably do right now is, from Sun City, from Sun City, Cherry Hills and Bradley Road, we can probably get bus transit, public transportation to the-- what's coming, the Paris train station, MetroLink station, or people in all the way into San Diego, Los Angeles, or what's the other big city, Seattle? No, just kidding now. Anyway, from Sun City, we'll be able to transport publicly, through public transfer, people from San Diego, Orange County, and San Diego. That's the ideal. The transit, RTA, is going to-- they're going to look at what our demands are, what our population, job, bill, and so on and so forth, and they will work with the city to develop a transportation system. But it's going to depend on the city council and what, in the future, the city council determines to be our transportation needs. And I know Mr. Edgerton's listening, and he will get back, and he will start working with RTA again, come back and bring us some possible news. But if anybody has any questions on the RTA public transit system for the city of Menifee, please get ahold of me. You can send it through the city, or you can directly email me, and I will go right to RTA and find the answers for you, and that's the way I'm going to learn. But I know Mr. Edgerton will be back on the job soon. Secondly, I did go to the meeting this morning, the caregiver ordinance, and I want to-- it was really, it was really a good meeting. A month ago, we had a meeting on mailboxes and vandalism and so on and so forth, and I left this meet-- I had more to do with that meeting, but the meeting I left today, I was particularly impressed with because of the testimony from the people that showed up in the audience, and it was moving, it was poignant. And what I really appreciate, and I'm going to mention these people by name, Mr. Mayor, the panel that Gloria Sanchez and Robert Lennox and the city of Menifee put together up on that stage couldn't have been more respectful, couldn't have been more professional, and it couldn't have been more right-on-point, because after that meeting today, all the questions from people in the audience were answered, but after the meeting today, those people were all in the audience, and they were writing down names, taking the concerns of the people, and they were going to take care of it, or they're going to look into it for the people. It was one of the best meetings I've ever been to, and I have to give all the credit to the city, Gloria Sanchez, Senior Citizens Advisor Committee. And just real quickly, on the panel was Riverside County Office of the Aging, Holmes Instead Senior Services, Riverside County of Public Social Services, Menifee Code Enforcement, Colleen McNeese, Lieutenant Guian, who's out in the lobby right now, he was in attendance, and also, really, really, good testimony from the Riverside County District Attorney's Office. It was a great, great meeting, and the city should be very proud, and also the Catholic Church for allowing us to host it there. So that's all I-- and I will give you all the information from RTA at the next meeting, so I apologize for not having it tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. August, for your report. Councilmember Pro Tem Denver.
I'm on the committee called WRCOG, and it met Monday, and we-- it's fun to be the council member for a city on WRCOG, because you get reports on what your city is doing, and those reports don't come through the city, they come through the county. I got a report on the city, from the Executive Committee, which I'm a member of, having to do with the audit of the city of Menifee, having to do with TUMF fees, and it was-- it's very, very positive. Matter of fact, it's more than very, very positive. Maybe the most interesting information is, is the city had a total of 318 single-family permits issued during the fiscal year, and the staff of WRCOG chose 45 to review and test. There are also a total of 18 multifamily permits, and the staff selected two of those to review and test. Virtually no problems encountered, no problems, no problems, no problems on issue after issue. There was a couple of things, and they had to really look to find something negative to say, and so it's kind of fun to read the negative comments. Actually, it's very hard to find the negative comments, to be truthful to you. During the course of the audit, city staff discovered a few street names that were incorrectly listed on the permits that were given to WRCOG, and the city's making every effort to correct that. And the city's doing a fantat-- I've never seen these words in a report from WRCOG before. The city is doing a fantastic job in the whole TUMF process. However, the worksheets are used to calculate fees. They should be attached to the remittance report for verification, and if the permit is exempt, provide an explanation as to why. They had to really stretch to find anything negative at all, so I think we owe Rob and the city staff a real round of applause on that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Denver. Councilmember Lees Meyer?
Yes, I did report to my committee this month. It was the WRRC-A. The balance of the agenda was basically contribution reports, quarterly reports on the consent calendar, so I'll be providing those reports to the city manager. The rest of the items were in closed session. But again, like Councilman Denver said, it's pretty neat to serve on a board with that many people from all the varying cities, along with some of our county supervisors, so I'm definitely looking forward to some more agenda items on that. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Lees Meyer. Mr. Edgerton, are you still with us?
Yes.
Do you have anything that you would like to share under Councilmember Comments tonight?
Well, under public comments from the council, as asked, I do.
Yes.
Are you meaning in reference to this project?
No, on any reports you have on Councilmember Comments at the beginning of the agenda.
No.
No?
Okay, thank you.
Under Councilmember Comments, I have some comments.
That's where we are.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I missed the beat here. Yes, I just, when a elected official is said, and they're part of a political body, it does put some pressure on that elected official's colleagues. And I want to give special thanks to my council, especially to Mayor Scott Mann, with strong support that I have had. I will be back finally at the next council meeting. Staff has been unbelievable. Kathy Bennett has been with us since inauguration. Kathy should have a bronze statue at our city hall. She's fantastic. A lot of work goes in to helping people when they're not there, and whether it's Gina or Julie, most especially that wonderful city manager, Rob Johnson. It is, when you get in this position, you get a better perspective of what other people do. And I can't sum it up better than to just say, to my colleagues, to staff, also, my gosh, I've had my constituents, I've had, I don't know, a couple hundred responses, but I just want to say particularly to staff and my colleagues for your support. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edgerton. We wish you the best, and we hope that you get back and join us up here as soon as you can, okay?
We're working on it. It's coming.
All right. Well, we're going to go through with the rest of the agenda. I have a couple things to report out on. The city of Menifee, in concert with the Chamber of Commerce, we had the annual mayor's luncheon and economic forecast. It's kind of a precursor to a State of a City event in the June, and we did a little bit different by having a panel of speakers. I think, with the exception of forgetting to invite a couple people, I think it was well-done and presented by all the speakers, so I thank everybody for that. Mr. Johnson, you and your team, and everybody who was involved. I also, yesterday, I-- we didn't have quorum, Mr. Edgerton, but we had a finance committee meeting yesterday, so there was no decisions made, but I want to thank our finance director, Mr. Foltz, for presenting the-- an early look to the finance committee on the comprehensive annual financial report. Well done to you, sir. Thank you very much. Great report, and I can't wait for you to present it to the rest of the council, especially when you share with them that there are no audit findings, no issues associated with that, and more importantly, really, is $1 million-plus-- importantly, really, is a $1 million-plus swept into the reserve at the June 30, 2014, end of fiscal year. So, thank you for that report, and we look forward to that coming back to the full council. I too, under my role on the Riverside County Transportation Commission, participated in a annual strategic planning workshop. And the whole, the whole thrust of the two-day workshop was how is Riverside County and its municipalities going to move goods and people around the county over the next 10, 15 years, when you consider that there are going to be an estimated 4.2 million more residents coming into the county in all communities, and additional goods and services being imported to America from the Pacific Rim and, and all of the seagoing traffic that goes into the port of Long Beach and LA Harbor, and looking for ways to increase that logistics capacity, to move those goods and services from the port inland to our inland distribution centers, onto trains, onto semi-trucks, onto planes, and to other markets across America and internationally. So, that was the whole purpose of the workshop, and the stark reality of it is, is that the entire state of California has a reduced revenue. And Mr. Johnson, you talked about this, I believe, in your city manager report, when you came back from the League of Cities event with city managers, about how Measure A money and the gas tax is dwindling due to the efficiencies in automobiles and miles per gallon capacity. So, it's, it's an interesting dichotomy that we're in, and so how we fix those roads and fix those potholes are going to be challenging for us in the, in the years to come. Finally, one last note for councilmember comments. For me, tonight, I am appointing a ad hoc committee of one councilmember, Councilmember Matt Lees Meyer from District Two. Councilmember Lees Meyer, this will last for about 30 days. It's a short-term ad hoc committee. If you would, please do what you need to do to use Mr. Lennox and Mr. Johnson, and if you need to pull somebody off of the Parks Commission or one of the youth advisory committees to help name the new eight-acre park in the Audi Murphy Ranch that's going to be constructed and built here in the next 60-some-odd days. If you could lead an effort for that and bring us back what we're going to name that park, that would be wonderful.
Certainly.
Should you choose to accept this mission, this message will self-destruct in five seconds.
Yes, for August.
Oh, just so that people aren't confused out there, I was talking about RTA, and Mr. the mayor was speaking about RCTC. RCTC is big. RTA is not that big. So, we're talking about two different agencies, right?
Well, that's a good point. When we talk about one expenditure for RCTC was the $1.3 billion expenditure for the widening of 91 freeway.
Okay.
Okay, very well. Any other comments from reports out? Okay, well done. Everybody had something to say. RTA, RCA, RCTC, WRCOG, all these acronyms make us all, our heads spin. Onto the consent calendar. Is there any item that needs to be pulled off consent tonight? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Shall move.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Edgerton, we're taking a roll call vote on the consent agenda, and I will call you first.
My vote is aye.
Thank you. Councilmember August.
Aye.
Councilmember Lees Meyer.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Denver.
Aye.
And Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Johnson, do you want to take an opportunity, we've passed this, do you want to talk about 10.1 a little bit and what it does to a certain interim staff member?
10.5?
Yes.
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, members of council, with your approval of item 10.5, we are now, have an agreement with Charles Abbott and Associates. That group that we have hired will complete the development code for the city. I was going to do this under city manager's comments or updates, but just to let you all know, this is Mr. Leclerc's last evening with us. He's been an integral part of our, of our community development department and our city, and a staff member, and I hope to call him friend as well. He's led us through a myriad of issues, starting with the general plan, moving to hillside ordinances, working on the development code, and really keeping the cohesive unit that we have intact with our planning manager and our, and our department staff. For those of you that don't know, Mr. Leclerc is retired of some 20, 30, 32 years in the community development and planning field, and we were fortunate enough to bring him on as an interim while we were doing our first recruitment for community development director, of which we found no one satisfactory to take that position. He is limited on the hours he can work per year, and he has amassed those, and he's going to ride off into the sunset, but not too far, because we believe, we hope, with the contract that we have established now with Charles Abbott and Associates, that we will be requesting Mr. Leclerc to work on the city's behalf to complete the development code. We will be doing a, we're in the middle of a recruitment for community development director. That position recruitment ends on the 20th of February, and I have a couple of options for an interim community development director that I'm trying to finalize. There would be an opportunity to, to promote a current staff member, but placing them in an acting role for a couple of months would upset the apple cart, in my opinion, in that department. So, hopefully, I'll have an announcement on that soon. But just thank you, Charles, very much. You've led us through some considerable challenges and some phenomenal work product that you've produced. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Lees Meyer?
If, if I may, if the contract does not go forward, I would like to take the opportunity to publicly, publicly thank you as the chairman of the Planning Commission coming out. I learned a lot from you, and I value everything you brought to our city regarding our general plan and helping to bring those policies together. But I do hope that that contract can be executed, and we can keep you a little bit longer.
Mr. August?
The contract has been approved.
We approved it.
Beautiful.
And I want to mirror what Mr. Lees Meyer said. I kind of knew at this, probably my short suit, I have a lot of them, but one of them is planning and development. And I can tell you that I probably came in here, I don't know what Mr. Leclerc expected from me, but I can only imagine what the rumors were. But there, almost every week, I stopped by his office and said, "Mr. Leclerc, what's going on here?" And I can tell you that I agree with everything Mr. Lees Meyer said, his knowledge and experience and everything. And every time I left Mr. Leclerc's office, I said, "Wow, we agree on everything." But that isn't the way all the staff reports turned out. So, I wanted to, I wanted to thank you, and I continue to look forward to working with him. He is a gentleman, a consummate professional, and I still have a lot to learn from him, so I want to thank you. And everybody that's worked with you would agree with me on that, Mr. Leclerc.
Thank you. I don't know what more to say, except say amen.
I appreciate all your comments, and I will attempt as much as possible to influence the, the people that make decisions about where staff goes to assign me to this city. But it's completely up to Charles Abbott as to where they assign me. So, I'll do what I can, but it's completely up to them.
And I just want to share with you that when you came here, and we gave you a priority of finishing the general plan, you took it, and you ran with it, and you finished it, and you got it back to us in a really, really logical way and a methodical way. It worked, and as well as all the other things that you brought. Like Mr. August said and Mr. Lees Meyer, I just, whenever I was in your office or whenever I called you on the phone, there was not an answer, there was not a question that you couldn't answer, and I always understood it. I, I left there having my question answered, and I may not have agreed with it or liked it, because a lot of it has to do with, you know, the government code and, and that nasty little thing called SEQA. But, you know, just thank you. Thank you all very, thank you very much for your efforts since you've been here. We really appreciate it. And we'll have your plaque later, too. On to 11, item 11.1 was re-noticed for February 18th. Onto agenda item 12.1, approve amendment number one to agreement with the county of Riverside regarding the I-215 interchange at Newport Road. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. A long time coming on this one. We're, we're very excited. I wanted to give you just a quick background to why we're doing an amendment to an agreement for the Newport Road I-215 interchange. I want to give a wave out to Patty Romo, who's here as the deputy director of Riverside County Transportation Land Management Department. I think I got that right. But the, the quick background was, on or about June or July of 2011, former city manager Bill Rawlings brought a, an agreement to council, which showed what an engineer's estimate might look like for the construction of the I-215 Newport Road interchange. And we really needed that process and that agreement to move forward so that the county could see that we're in, we're in together. It's a lockstep program. What we're doing tonight is we're mending that, because the project has been bid out. There is not an estimate anymore. There is a project cost. And all the little boxes that you saw before that had 2BD on them, to be determined, are now determined. They're in your staff report. We can go over those. I'm going to hand it off to Mr. Smith in just a minute. The balance of the fact is, in December of 2011, this council, the council for the city of Menifee, agreed to do a trip financing program, which netted $20 million for the city. 17.8 million of that was committed to the interchange project. Those funds, along with the county's expertise, was used to go after a larger nut, which was about a $14.6 million nut to crack. And through the county and the city's efforts, through the program of a call for projects that RCTC did, the city was awarded $14.6 million. So, the estimated $37 million project became a $48 million project. It is fully funded. What we're asking for tonight is to approve the amendment. And we're also asking to increase the, the construction contingency only to 15%. We have worked out an agreement with the county, and Ms. Romo came up with 1.1 of the $1.5 million necessary for that construction contingency. So, we have placed aside, we're asking council to agree with us, to place aside and encumber $400,000 to be used only in the extreme emergency of that contingency. And without further ado, and I've spent a lot of time, sorry about that, but you need to hear the background of this and why we're here. Finally, with the approval of council tonight, Ms. Romo can take this to the Riverside Board of Supervisors, that can award the bid, and we can start the construction of our highly anticipated Newport I-215 interchange project. I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Smith. He has a couple photos to show you of some schematic designs of what that would look like when it's done, and we're free to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. Back in 2012, the Citizen Advisory Committee was formed to look at the aesthetics and come up with recommendations for aesthetics for the interchange. Just wanted to take a few minutes and show you what they are. Adds to the complexity of the project and the reason why we're looking for a 15% contingency. This, this view is northbound 215. You see on your right-hand side the Menifee monument that will be placed in that location.
Is that the scale?
That's the scale. Don't want you to miss Menifee. Okay. This is an overview of the interchange, showing the location of the oak trees. And also, you can see the geometrics of the semi-clover leaf design. This is a view looking up at the deck, what it would look like from down below, the fencing and the lighting, and also, that pop-out that is underneath the light there is actually an acorn design. This is just another view of it, looking up, and this is a, this is looking from the actual roadway. You see how it's popped out away from any, any possibility of being hit by a vehicle. So, today, what we're looking at for this amendment is it, this amendment recertifies the fact that the city will pay $17.8 million for the project. And we also are agreeing to provide 10% of that money upfront. That provides some float to the county, so they have money to be able to pay the contractor while they wait to encumber the rest of the money that will be due in future progress payments. As well as what the city manager was discussing, the additional $400,000 that will be added to the contingency for the project. And I just want to note that this money will be a last-resort item to be used only after we've exhausted every possibility of looking at ways of saving money through value engineering or doing something, doing something less. So, today's recommendation on action for councils to approve the amendment, number one, appropriate the 17.8 from the Newport Interchange CIP, and to take $400,000 from the Bradley Road CIP and apply it to this project and authorize the city manager to use it, should we need it in the event that we have a construction change. That ends my presentation. If you can answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any questions? Ms. Romo, could you, I had a couple questions for you, actually, just two. I just want a confirmation of something. Thank you for coming tonight and, and during the first port of our move, of our meeting. This is going to be, the contract from the RFP is going to be on the Board of Supervisors on February 10th, is that right? Next week, next Tuesday?
No, it's going to be on March 10th.
March 10th, okay.
Yes. The original plan was to take it on February 24th, but the board is dark that day, so we're taking it on the 10th. However, we've already scheduled a pre-construction meeting with the contractor that we're going to be awarding this to, and that meeting is on February 25th. And so, we're still going full speed ahead, getting all the paperwork ready, getting permits with Caltrans. We're positioning ourselves so that we can break ground.
Mr. August?
Question for Jonathan, Jonathan.
You want to ask, you want to ask?
I want to ask Rob. Okay, sorry. Would you, would you please confirm and give us an explanation on the $400,000 that's being taken from the Bradley Bridge to, shifted over to the interchange for 215?
Yes, thank you for the question. We, we have a timing issue on the Bradley Road Bridge. We're actually going out and, and seeking another design alternative for that, which will, we believe will cut costs, number one. But two, this is only encumbering the funds. We're not taking those funds and giving them to anyone until the very last piece. And I've been assured by my city engineer that value engineering will be, will be done on that bridge. So, if there's an issue and we're running cost overrides, we're going to start putting a clamp on that immediately. So, my point is, it's like a borrow. We're taking that CIP, we're earmarking $400,000 of it, and we're putting an asterisk right by it, and then when we don't use it, we take the asterisk away.
Would you put my name by that asterisk as well? And also, we still looking at 2016 for completion?
Yes.
Okay. Sometime in 2016.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Romo, on March 10th, when the contract gets awarded by the Board of Supervisors, how soon will we be shovels in the ground? Your, your best estimate. I mean, because let the pain begin. It's going to be, it's going to get worse for us before it gets better.
Yeah. I, I would say by the time you see bulldozers and earth moving around, it'll be the first part of April. You will notice work going on. If they haven't started already, starting to remove trees and shrubs. Nesting season starts on March 1st, and we want to make sure we get all that stuff out of the way, so we don't have birds nesting, and, you know, things will stop. Utilities are being moved. Like I said, there's, there's paperwork for scheduling and so on. So, I would say bulldozers, things moving around, it'll be in April.
All right, thanks. Mr. Lees Meyer?
Sorry, I know you always have the last word.
That's okay.
Something just came to me.
All right.
I had heard a rumor that you kind of had the idea of phasing the project in a way so that we build the on and off ramps first, in a way that we alleviate the traffic and get the people off Newport Road and get them on the freeway quick.
Yes.
So, we don't congest that bridge. Can you elaborate on some of the phasing?
Absolutely. So, for everyone that's driven across the freeway there along Newport, if, if you're heading in the eastbound direction, for instance, you have to cross over the freeway. And if you want to go northbound, you've got to wait, and you've got to wait for everyone going in the other direction before you can cross. To alleviate that, what we're going to do is build those loops. So, so that way, you just have that free right, and you're not having to cross. To go northbound, you just take that loop and turn right, and that, and that really gets traffic moving. So, that's going to be our first order of work. We're going to get those things built, so that as we have to narrow the lanes down to widen that bridge, we'll have that relief, and we don't have to have that additional conflict. So, we want to eliminate that conflict, so that people don't have to wait for traffic to move, to cross.
And there'll probably be some sort of an interim connection, and then once you're ready to make the final connection to the new bridge, there'll be a little bit of lag there. But for the most part, we're getting people off Newport Road as quick as we can.
Right. We're really paying attention to traffic. It's bad now, and we don't, we're trying really hard not to make it worse.
Thank you.
Mr. Denver?
Speaking of traffic, it's my understanding, is this correct, that we're taking down basically the south side of the freeway, that half, and taking it down, and in the, in the meantime, adding one more lane, some magical way on the north side of the freeway. But we'll still have maybe one less lane each way on that freeway for maybe 18, I mean, on that overpass for 18 months-ish?
We're going to, no, we're going to widen the nor, the existing north side of the bridge. And that's going, we're going to configure that so you still can get the same number of lanes through there while we demolish the other side. And the reason I say you're still going to have the same capacity is because we're going to get those loop ramps built. So you won't need that additional turn pocket.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. I, I believe Ms. Romo just answered that question. So the north side of the bridge will be built first. You'll have the same amount of lanes east and west. All traffic will be diverted to the north side. South side will be deconstructed, and after the south side deconstruction, the loops will be connected, on and off, on, on-ramp loops to the freeway. So there'll be direct right lanes on to the freeway, and then the south side will be built, and then traffic will be moved, correct?
Correct.
So we're doing the best we can, and the county's partnered with us, and we created these, this formula that we believe we can get as much traffic on the north side when that north side extension is built as we currently have on it now.
Thank you very much, Ms. Romo. We appreciate you being here tonight, and thanks, staff, for your presentation. If there are no further questions, may I have a motion to approve staff's recommendations as presented?
So moved. Would you like it in a item-by-item or a year?
I think we can take the balance.
Okay. Yeah, I would move that we approve the balance of that agenda item.
Seconded. Thank you. Seconded by Mr. August.
On item 12.1, approving the amendment to the agreement with the County of Riverside regarding the I-215 interchange at Newport. Councilmember Lee Smire.
Aye.
Councilmember August.
Asterisk included.
Asterisks included.
Aye.
Free of charge. Councilmember Edgerton.
Aye.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Denver. And Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
On to Agenda 12.2, adopt resolution number 15-420, acceptance and conveyance of real property off Getz Road from the County of Riverside and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. When we accepted the conveyance of the senior center, I had a meeting up in Riverside County at the offices there with Mr. Ashley, and I quite frankly just asked if there's any, any other property in the city that they would want to give us. And this property was identified. It's the former Project Lift site, just south of, just, actually, it's at the corner of Getz and Oneida. It's 2.18 acres. It's, it's actually clear right now. It's been fenced in for several years. Anything associated with Project Lift has been moved out. The county agreed to convey it to us, and I'm here to ask your acceptance of that real property for the city free of charge.
Is there a motion?
So approved.
We have a, a motion by Mr. Denver, a second by Mr. August?
On item 12.2, adopt resolution, acceptance and conveyance of real property of Getz Road. Councilmember Edgerton.
Aye.
Councilmember August.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee Smire.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Denver.
Aye.
Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. On to City Attorney Reports.
Nothing this evening. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Melching, and thank you for your advice earlier in the meeting. I appreciate that, I appreciate the, the guidance.
If I could put a word in on that, if you'll indulge me for a second, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to make it clear that the city council has adopted a decorum policy. The decorum policy was originally adopted in 2008. It's been updated. It was most recently updated in January of last year, 2014. Decorum policy is not in place to try and squelch or discourage people from speaking publicly. It is exactly as its name implies. It is to make sure that people behave properly and respectfully in the, in the city council context. And to frame what happened this evening, we had a speaker who came up and who was behaving in a disorderly manner. She was, she was violating the decorum policy, and when there was an opportunity to have somebody say to her, as we did to another speaker this evening, "You need to recognize that you're out of line with the decorum policy," rather than listening, she continued to speak over people. The decorum policy says in paragraph four that when somebody acts in a, or that people shall not act in a disorderly manner or engage in conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of a city council meeting. And that's precisely what was happening. When that happens, the presiding officer, who in this instance is the mayor, has the authority under the decorum policy to say in the first instance, "That's a warning. You need to get yourself in line." And if I was counting properly this, this evening, Mr. Mayor, you did that twice. Once that's, once that's been done, and if the person doesn't come into line, the decorum policy gives the presiding officer the authority to eject that person from the meeting. And nobody enjoyed seeing that or having to go through that experience, but frankly, it was in line with this, with the city's adopted decorum policy and was necessary in order to preserve the level of dialogue for this meeting. So that's all I have, your, your honor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Melching. Mr. August?
Question for a city attorney, and this is unclear to me, and it's a, it's a kind of a complicated issue, and it's a fine line. But I, I was elected by the majority of the people in a district, and I was elected, there were 20,000, 22,000 people in District 1. If I, if one of my people in the district that voted for me or didn't vote me comes up here and they're unhappy with one of my votes, which I'm sure happens more times than I care to think about, doesn't that person have a right to come and say, "You know, Mr. August, I disagree." "Mr. August," he names by name, and he says, "Mr. August, I disagree with your vote." Now, I don't want him to call me a liar. I don't want to jump on him, and I wouldn't do the same to him. But I think you need to make it clear to the people out here that you can speak to a councilman by name because we're represented by districts, and I would hope you'd address that for us.
I appreciate the opportunity to do that. Thank you, Councilmember August. Again, the decorum policy is exactly as its name suggests. It isn't trying to squelch people's opportunity to show up in public and express their disagreement, including their disagreement with a decision or a statement or behavior of an individual council member. That's not what it's about. It's about making sure that when that dialogue is conveyed to the council, it's done so in an appropriate manner. And the city council saw fit in 2008, and then through the revisions up through 2014, to say, "If you're going to do that, you should address the city council as a whole." So that doesn't mean that somebody can't come here and say they disagree, Councilmember August, with a policy or a decision that you've made in your role as a city council member. But it does mean that they really shouldn't address a personal attack to you. To reference you by name is one thing. To try and engage in a dialogue from that place with you about your personal behavior is not inside the scope of the decorum policy.
Thank you, Mr. Melching. Mr. Johnson, City Manager Reports, and I apologize to you for earlier for stealing, or at least advancing some of the things that you wanted to share with Mr. Leclerc earlier than you perhaps planned, so I apologize.
That was, we went with the flow. It was good. It was a good segue. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I need to report out that I was at the League of California Cities City Managers Conference. Gosh, was that just last week? It seems like it was a long time ago. Three days full of really impactful conference items specifically focused on city managers. For those of you that aren't aware, there's 473 of us, city managers in the state. There were 464 in attendance. There were some others who weren't city managers that were in attendance, which, which brought the attendance above 600, but that's a phenomenal amount of, that's a phenomenal response. And the League's done a great job in training us to work better with you and with the community and with our staffs. I'd really like to send a compliment out to the League for that. We are working on our legacy workshop. We're finalizing a date, as I look with the city clerk who's working on that with me. I did want to thank Robert for your leadership today at the CARE workshop and for the Senior Advisory Committee. Those that were in attendance, I, I thought that was far beyond what I expected to happen today. About 100 people were there, by my count. I think over/under our wager was 100, but I don't remember who took over or under. The presentations were, were wonderful. The people who spoke have a deep-seated passion for seniors, and it showed. And I, I believe there was an amount of not only energy but information given out to, to help our, aid, those that are aging in our community. And we're going to attach some of those things to our website. We already had some things on there, but we're going to make sure that we get the information out to those that, that need it. Finally, I had a very interesting conversation with two board members of Valleywide Recreation and Park District yesterday. It ebbed and flowed a little bit. The conversation was interesting, to say the least. What came out of it was no real decision, but a request of me to request of council. They would like to form some form of ad hoc committee of our council that would meet with an ad hoc committee of their council. Their purpose would be that they could forever run our park and recreation programs and projects in the city. So I would just pose that to you, and if you'd like to agendaize that at a later date, or give me direction to speak with them, or if you'd like to come up with your own ideas on, on how we do that. This, this really came out of the LAFCO decision where I, I attended a LAFCO hearing where Valleywide was attempting to annex the rest of our city into their sphere of influence, and I successfully defeated that with the LAFCO board voting seven to nothing to not allow them to do that. In which then I sent a letter to them, letting them know that one of the provisions of the LAFCO decision was to actually have them detach and move out of the city. So that was, this was their response to that, the letter that I sent to them. After that, I have no further updates, and I'll be able to answer any questions you may have.
With respect to that topic, we'll take that under advisement for a future discussion. But given the unanimous LAFCO decision, there's going to have to be a plan, and we're going to have to work with them in a collegial way to make that transition happen for the benefit of both organizations. So to the extent that we can make that happen, to advance that cause, we can do that. But we'll, we'll take it under advisement on the ad hoc and decide that later.
Thank you.
Future agenda requests from council members. Mr. Edgerton, are you still with us, sir? Do you have any future agenda item requests?
No, not at this point. Just comment. The mayor is, as usual, running a good meeting.
Thanks. Thanks, Mr. Edgerton. Appreciate that, sir. Mr. August?
Again, I, I want to extend my deep gratitude to the people in the audience who attended today and the staff. Those are the kind of occasions that make being a city council person worthwhile. So again, it was, it was one of the more rich and rewarding experiences I've had, and thank you, sir, for putting it together for us. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible]. Anything else? Well, I, I can't wait to see what comes out of that process. I heard Mr. Johnson shared with me on the telephone today what an amazing meeting it actually was and the things that came out of it. Can't wait to see it translate into policy formulation for our own city. With all that being said, we are adjourned.